Amen. Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. Nice to see you all here, nice and quiet as well. Good class today, I can see. Right, welcome to this formal meeting, the Children Cultural Scrutiny Committee. My name is councillor Brenda Collier. I'm chair here this morning, and my right is my vice-chair Stuart Grantham, and on my left is our democratic services officer Jess Wasser-Yates. Thank you. Also present in the council chamber is our scrutiny officer Tracey Johnson. I'd like to begin with a health and safety announcement. There are no fire drills planned for this morning, but if the alarm does go off, then please leave the chamber in an orderly manner through that way. First council meeting, I said through that way, but it's definitely that way, through to the car park and wait there for further instructions, please. This meeting is being streamed live via the county council's website, and all your comments will remain accessible online after the meeting and can be reported by the media. With this in mind, I would like to welcome members of the public and press watching our meeting today. Can I remind everyone to ensure their mobiles? Laptops and tablets are on silent for the duration of this meeting, please. The hearing loop is now activated. Requests to speak will be collated by the vice-chair, and if you wish to speak, can you please raise your hand, nice and clear, so that Stuart Grantham here can see your hands waving at him, and we will get to you in turn. Thank you. And when invited to speak, would you press the button on your microphone unit to make it live? And please speak directly into your microphone. I don't always pick up everything, so nice and clear and loud for me. I'd be most appreciative. When you're finished, please remember to switch your mic off again, please, so everyone can hear clearly who goes on next. Right, we will now move on to the formal agenda. So we have apologies and absence and replacements. Jess, do you have any apologies, please?
Thank you, chairman. We've received apologies from councillor Brooks. We also have councillor Whitaker replacing councillor Smith and councillor Deish replacing councillor Hume, and we've also received apologies from councillor Oliver, the executive councillor for children's services. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, item two, declaration of councillors' interests. Members of the committee are reminded that they only need to declare any relevant interests which have not been declared on their declaration of pecuniary interest form. If you become aware of any interests at any point during the meeting, you can declare it then. Any interest declared will be recorded in the minutes. Do any members have wished to declare an interest? Nope. Okay, thank you. Item three, minutes of the previous meeting of the Children Cultural Scrutiny Committee held on the 25th of July 2025. This item is to approve and sign the minutes of the last meeting of the Children's and Cultural Scrutiny Committee held on the 25th of July 25 as a correct record. The minutes can be found on pages five to 12 of the agenda pack. Do I have a proposer, please? Thank you, Kane Parkinson, and a seconder, please. Thank you. We will now vote. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. I don't think there's any against. Thank you, that is carried then. Thank you, that's a correct record. Item four, announcements by the chairman, executive councillors and lead officers. Just to make the committee aware, I may hold a ten-minute comfort break, depending on how we go. That'd be possibly after item six today, if we can all hang on there. But we're not expecting a long meeting, but who knows, we could hopefully have some nice questions and answers going today as well. But hopefully after, if we do need a comfort break, we go for that after item six, or before, sorry, item six. Moving on then, are there any executive councillor announcements from councillor Paul Locke? No, okay. And his support councillor for children's services. Finally, are there any announcements from any other senior officers?
None from us, chair, thank you.
All right, okay, everybody's happy? Okay, thank you very much. Item five, Lincolnshire Safeguarding Children's Partnership Annual Report, April 24 to March 25. This item is on pages 13 to 42 of the agenda pack and sets out the Lincolnshire Safeguarding Children's Partnership's annual report for April 2024 to March 2025. Actions required. The actions required by the committee are to review and comment on the work and functions of the Lincolnshire Safeguarding Children's Partnership, and seek assurance on the activity by the partnership to safeguard and promote the welfare of children in Lincolnshire. This report will be presented by Chris Cook, independent scrutineer of the LSCP, and Stacey Waller, LSC, LSCP business manager, who will be providing us with the presentation. Thank you very much. So I would like to welcome Sharon Robinson, the non-executive director on the NHS Lincolnshire Integrated Care Board, who has attended via Teams to represent Heather, Health, sorry, on behalf of the LSCP. Unfortunately, a delegate from the Office of the Police and Crime Commissioner cannot attend today to represent the police on behalf of the partnership. I will be allowing Sharon to participate for this item, and she is welcome to ask questions of Chris and Stacey at the end of their presentation. So over to Chris and Stacey, please.
Thank you, chairman. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for inviting us to this meeting. It'll be a double act, chairman, and I'll kick us off. We do have a number of slides. You'll be pleased to know that it won't be death by PowerPoint, and we have chosen some key slides for you this morning. The rest of the slides are in your pack, and I'm sure you've all read them anyway, so. So if I could have the first slide, please. Thank you very much. Okay, so there's been a change in statutory guidance. There's always change in society, particularly in the public sector, and national reform, and reform is healthy because we do need to develop. So we've established the lead safeguarding partners, and the key strategic partners are from children's services, the local authority, of course, the health community and the police. So Heather is a key strategic partner as director of children's services. Removal of the independent chair role, well, that was me, so they've removed me in the nicest possible way. And independent chairs were established about fifteen, twenty years ago, following some major inquiries nationally around the deaths of babies particularly. And there was a judicial inquiry that recommended the independent chair role, but that's now ceased, and we've introduced the independent scrutineer, and once again, that's me for the time being, anyway. So I am the independent scrutineer of the partnership, and the partnership chair is currently Heather, and she's been doing it extremely well, I have to say, as the independent scrutineer. And Heather and I work closely. I'm here to scrutinise and professionally challenge not only Heather, but all the partners in the partnership, and that's what I do. Very importantly, we've introduced the strategic education lead role to represent the sector, and you'll find that during our presentation today, we do comment quite a lot about the development of the education role in safeguarding. And we've raised the profile of education in this area, quite rightly so, because they play such a key part in protecting and safeguarding children in our county. We've established a quality assurance and independent scrutiny panel, and I chair that as the independent scrutineer, and we held one yesterday. And all the partners were in attendance, and we were looking at certain areas of our work. We were looking at audit work, action plans and scrutinising them. And once again, we'll go back to the development of our engagement with education, which we'll refer to quite a bit during our presentation. So if I could have the next slide, please. Thank you. So here we go then, the role of education. We reviewed existing involvement of education sector around our partnership. We've established a post-16 setting cluster, bringing colleges together, so that's really important. It's about coordination. The key to safeguarding in this country is for everybody to speak to one another and to coordinate with each other, because it's a jigsaw, and all the jigsaw pieces need to be together. If there's one piece of the jigsaw missing, then the ball is dropped and children are not protected properly, so that's important. We've established and launched new education-focused structure, and we've created some district safeguarding forums for teachers around this county, and I've been attending some of those. And you'll be amazed at the good work that the teaching profession do in our county, and the hours that they sometimes have to spend after school in protecting our children. We showcased our model to the Department of Education. The Department of Education came up to Lincoln, and we had a day with them, and we were showcasing what we were doing, and they were impressed. And we've appointed, as I've said already, our first strategic education lead to represent the sector at strategic meetings. It's so important that the education sector have that presence at the strategic meetings. And increased representation with reviews and audits as well. So their profile has been raised considerably, and quite rightly so, in my view. So if I could move to the next slide, please, independent scrutiny, and that's me. Not only me, because all the partners should challenge each other. And we do, in Lincolnshire, have a very good relationship across the partnership. Key partners can actually challenge each other very professionally and do so, and I witnessed that as well. And that's about the development of our partners. We have the quality assurance and independent scrutiny panel, which I've already alluded to, and that's very important, that we actually do review our audits. We carry out audits. It's so important to audit, to understand what is going on and to challenge what is going on, rather than sit back and assume what is going on. And it can be evidenced as well, which is the important thing. We've carried out multi-agency audits on child exploitation and domestic abuse, and we do have audit challenge days as well, which is quite an intense day. I chair that. And practitioners come to the meeting with their cases, and we talk to them about individual cases. So we actually get down into the weeds of safeguarding. Assurance on our action plan progress. It's so important that if we've created action plans, that we don't just sit on them and let them go. We actually ensure that things are moving forward. And we do have a performance scorecard. Once again, performance is so important. Individual agencies have their own performance, but it's important for us as a partnership to have that oversight of performance of what is going on. Thank you. So the next one is one of our strategic priorities, tackling child exploitation. Very important area of our work. And we've increasing our focus on locations and persons of concern in our MACE meetings. MACE, multi-agency child exploitation. So we've got a structure, quite a robust structure, in dealing with child exploitation. And one key asset we have in our partnership, not all partnerships have this, is an analyst. And that analyst can analyse the data that's coming in from all the agencies, so we can actually look at what is going on. It gives us a greater picture, and it's so important. So teams in children's services have direct access to a suite of reports to assist operational delivery, and that data is so important, so they can identify if there's any areas of concern. Missing episode meetings are now held more consistently and are more structured. And missing is a trigger. If we have a child that goes regularly missing, it can be a trigger, that that child may be being exploited, and there's a requirement to look into that case in more depth to establish what's going on. Key performance indicators have been established to monitor timeliness of MACE discussions. Once again, we've got performance involved in that, and performance means delivery, and so it's important that we deliver a first-class service for these children. Voluntary sector briefings are held on exploitation. The voluntary sector play a key role in this, working in the communities on the front line. They are eyes and ears for the main public sector organisations. And once again, it's coordinating that and bringing all that together. And our voluntary sector in Lincolnshire is very proactive and work extremely well. So I'm now going to hand over to Stacey. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. So I'm just going to talk through the last of the remaining strategic priorities and the work that's been completed. And as Chris said, all of this is in the full report. So this year, we ran an emotional wellbeing campaign, so a lot of our work, when we have findings from audits or from review activities, then to kind of promote sort of certain risk areas and kind of safety within the community and across the partnership. Our emotional wellbeing campaign was one that I'm particularly proud of and what the team have developed, because actually it was about capturing the voices of young people within Lincolnshire, and they were telling us what affects their emotional wellbeing, what makes them happy, what makes them sad. And then there's a video that's been created, sort of sharing the voices of our primary school children, and we're still working on how we kind of share that from our secondary schools. But I can share the link to that video. It's just a short clip, but it is, it's really powerful, and it got all of us thinking as well about how we interact with our children and support their emotional wellbeing. So that was a big piece of work this year. The other two, so the trauma-informed practice e-learning, so that was something that we developed ourselves, so thinking about how as a children's workforce, we could be more trauma-informed, being responsive to our children and their parents, recognising their lived experiences and what has maybe happened to them prior to them coming into contact with services and recognising their vulnerabilities. So that was launched, and during the year, we had over 1,600 people across the Lincolnshire workforce complete that training. The Zero Suicide Alliance training is an all-age training package, and we've added that to our six-year pathway, which is our training programme that is available for everybody and anybody, so that's a free programme as part of our introduction. So we felt that that was important to promote, and again, we've had over 3,600 individuals complete that in the last year as well. In relation to the trauma-informed practice, in the report, my training officer's gone and provided some information and feedback on that e-learning with regards to impact, because again, it's great that we have people completing it, but what we need to be capturing is the difference that that's making, and we do that through feedback and evaluations. Next slide, please. So promoting healthy relationships. So we work closely with the other partnerships within Lincolnshire, the Stay Safe partnership, go out and deliver in schools. So they are a direct frontline-facing team, and they go into all schools in Lincolnshire, or they offer us to go into all schools in Lincolnshire and work directly with young people and children. So we supported them in relation to their healthy relationship sessions, and they had access to 100% of mainstream secondary schools in the academic year. Education settings are really enthusiastic about the Stay Safe partnership and their offer, the Stay Safe days that they do, and they're always really well-received, and they are run by different members from across the partnership and coordinated through the Stay Safe partnership. Again, the Stay Safe partnership delivered parental and professional engagement sessions, so these were online workshops. They do a couple of these each year. The focus of these this year were navigating teenager relationships and online safety, and again, really well-attended by parents and by professionals, and like, Stay Safe partnership report into a different scrutiny committee, and they report on the impact of the work that they do as well. Next slide, please. So neglect has been a really big focus over the last couple of years, and I feel that we've really made significant progress with this area of work. So initially, we'd completed a bit of a dip sample around sort of some of the quality of assessments and plans, so that gave us our starting point and our benchmark with regards to what we needed to develop with regards to local resources and tools. So what we knew is actually what we were providing for the workforce was actually going to meet their needs. We launched the resources at the end of last year, and the neglect scales, and what that aims to do is to provide existent language and sort of an objective assessment of what neglect could look like for a child, and it's very much focused on the impact for the child, and it's written to the family, so it's supposed to be a really inclusive tool that is being used. We were able to share that and co-develop it with a national leading figure around neglect, so Jane Whiffin, who works with the National Panel, and we had really positive feedback from Jane, and she felt that actually it was the only sort of tool and resource that had been written to parents and had that inclusive nature, so it was really good for Lincolnshire. We are currently in the process of completing our neglect audits, our multi-agency audit, and a key part of that is now assessing the impact of those resources and scales. So actually, a year after launch, how are they being used? What's the feedback that we are getting from frontline practitioners? So when we come next year, we'll be able to talk to you about that and what difference that is making. All of our training was updated to reflect the new resources and the tools, and we've run a programme of workshops over the year to help sort of embed the tools and keep it on people's agenda as they kind of go through the year. Thanks, Jess. So our next priority is about identifying and reducing sexual and physical harm. We have been working since 2021 with the Child Sexual Abuse Centre of Expertise, so that is a national charity that's hosted by Barnardo's and commissioned by the Home Office, and we were successful in a bid to work with them in 2021, and we've maintained that close relationship with them. So previously, we had developed our child sexual abuse strategy with them, and then during the last year, we'd looked at benchmarking ourselves against the strategy. So within the strategy, we've set out what we want to achieve and how we want to achieve it. And then this year, we've started some work around actually how are we doing against that, so kind of testing ourselves. We've commissioned RAIN training, so RAIN are a fantastic community interest company based in Manchester, and it's all young women who have had lived experience of child sexual abuse or exploitation, and they're using their experiences to speak to professionals and kind of affect change. So we've been able to deliver that. We've been given funding. The OPCC funded that last year, and this year, we've got funding again through the Pathfinder project, so practitioners are able to sign up to those events. And again, it's unilateral phenomenal feedback that we get around that training. It's so powerful. We've completed the multi-agency audit on child sexual abuse, and second to that, we've also done some benchmarking against a national panel's review. So the National Panel do thematic reviews around safeguarding issues, and the one that they published this year was on child sexual abuse within the families. So because of the work that we've done with the Centre of Expertise, when we did that benchmarking against the National Panel's review, we were in a really strong position, because a lot of what the recommendations from that review were, were about the work that we'd completed with the CSA Centre already, so we felt that Lincolnshire was in a strong position with that. However, as always, we always kind of test ourselves and see actually, is there anything that we can do for others? So we have got an action plan out of both of those areas of work, which our working group is kind of working through and progressing at the moment. Okay, and the last one. Okay, so this is an area of assurance, so this is slightly different to one of our priorities. So since the Lincolnshire Domestic Abuse Partnership formed, we recognise that actually the governance and the duty around domestic abuse sits with that partnership. However, it's obviously a priority and a big area of our work and for those that work with children. So we work really closely with the Domestic Abuse Partnership, but that's why it's more of an area of assurance than a strategic priority for us, and just making sure that we're still championing the voices and the impact of children within the Domestic Abuse Partnership. So work that we've done in collaboration is we've taken over the governance and oversight of the Operation Encompass. So Operation Encompass, just for information, when the police go to an incident of domestic abuse, if there is a child present or registered at that address, they send a alert within 24 hours to the school. It's not a detailed notification, but it's just so the school are aware that if that child is maybe a bit more distressed that day, or they're seeing behaviours that are a bit out of context, the incident is then kind of known about, so the school can respond to that and kind of ensure, check in with them and make sure that they're okay. So police felt when they had oversight of that, they were kind of marking their own homework a little bit, so they came to the partnership and said, actually, this needs to be sat within your area of work, and actually, everyone needs to kind of be aware of this. And because of our connections with school and education, it sort of made sense that we were able to support with that oversight. We've also redeveloped the training and launched that. So initially, there was sort of national training and local training, so we've kind of overhauled it all and relaunched it, so there is just now one training offer for all individuals involved in that process. We did a joint audit with the Domestic Abuse Partnership, which commenced early 2025, so that is now just being signed off, and the action plan is being pulled together. Benchmarking against the J-TI, and apologies for the acronym, I should have taken these out. So that's the Joint Targeted Area Inspection. So as a partnership, we are inspected separate to children's services, but we are inspected by Ofsted, HMRC SF, which is the Police Inspectorate, CQC, which is the Health and ICB Inspectorate, and HMIP, which is the Probation Inspectorate. So all four inspectorates come in and inspect us. And each year, they identify a new theme that they will inspect on, and last year, it was domestic abuse. So we then benchmarked against the evaluation criteria that was published, and we did the audit as well, just to assure ourselves that we were compliant with the expectations. And we worked with the Domestic Abuse Partnership as well to ensure that children remained a key focus in their strategy. So again, just an example of where we cross over and do the joint work in. I think that's everything. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. We appreciate the report. Just a couple of things I'd like to just comment on there. I think in anything, communication is the biggest thing. If we do not communicate with one another, whatever organisation is, well, we're lost, really. We don't get very far. So, okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Chris and Stacey. I'd like now to invite members of the committee and Sharon to speak on this item. Councillor Grantham, do you have any speakers, please? Councillor Clark, please.
Thank you, chairman. Thank you for that report. On the introduction, it says, "When a child is identified as suffering or likely to suffer significant harm, there is a prompt appropriate, et cetera." Could you give us an example of when this took place with the partnership?
Sorry, councillor Clark. Is that on the first page?
Yeah, it's on the section one.
Section one. So what we have with our partners is a really clear and structured process, and we have sort of clear thresholds in relation to what the serious harm looks like. And if they are concerned, they will send in a notification to one of our subgroups. And then as a partnership, we look at the information around the incident, what's known about the child and the family, and then there's a number of options that we have following that in relation to the level of review that we will or maybe don't undertake. So it's kind of assurance, it's a checking process that we have as well.
How long will that take? Because it does say prompt. Like, if it came in now, would it be action by 11 o'clock, or would it be action by Wednesday, you know?
Is it all right if I take that one, chair?
Yes, please, Hannah.
So I think the section that councillor Clark's referring to is about how agencies work together, rather than just the reviews. So in terms of how, so what it's saying is, should we get a notification that a child is identified as a suffering or likely to suffer, that notification can come from school, a neighbour, police, and then we have a very structured response across the partnership. So we would review that notification. We would look, as Chris said, at all the other pieces of the jigsaw we know about that young person. And absolutely, that would be actioned if it met our threshold that day. And if we needed to do a strategy discussion and we needed to involve our partners in that, we would have a strategy meeting with the partners. we would have a strategy meeting with the partners. And if it was something because the child already had an allocated worker that we could go out and look at ourselves, we would go out and look at that ourselves. And then what happens with the partnership is either through the routine audit, we will look at how is that working and that will happen afterwards. That's not the, so the partnership is about training, coordination. The response operationally would happen instantly, but the partnership would be reviewing that response periodically to look for learning. Or if we had a response that we didn't think had worked as well as it should, and then you would go into a formal review. But yeah, I can assure councillor Clark that where, where that threshold is met, the response would be immediate.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Heather. councillor Parkinson, please.
Thank you so much, chair. First of all, just want to say how brilliant it is to see the great work that we're doing. Obviously, it continues to be Pathfinders, being a leading council across the country. It's fantastic to see working across so many, yeah, different industries, people, there's so many people involved. So it's brilliant to see. My question really is just around the analysts that we have on board. So in terms of when they're analysing trends, is that looking at trends that go outside of the norm? Or is there something specific they're actually looking for within that data?
Okay, so our analyst works across a number of different areas. So exploitation, child sexual abuse, the OpEn Compass. He then will present that to the multi-agency meeting. And then it is about that, that testing and thinking, actually, that looks a little bit high at the moment or that's low. But then it's understanding that within the context of what's going on potentially within, within the service. So if police have maybe had a particular focus in an area around a particular operation, we might see a spike in, in kind of arrests. So it's around then understanding that context. So it isn't necessarily an agenda that he will dig into, but it is about that day to day and kind of trends that we see and then kind of responding to that. So one example is, is previously, we would maybe see, which you, you would maybe appreciate, is with an influx in families into the East Coast area. We tend to see a spike in missing, but it, but it's all range of missing. So actually, previously, we've been in and we've spoken with the caravan owners and their communities just to kind of raise their awareness about what they can do to support that. And then we've supported like the Starfish Campaign. So we kind of use that data, see what the trends are. And then we try and work as a partnership to, to affect that and respond to it sort of proactively as well.
I can't emphasise enough the importance of an analyst. There, there's masses of data across all public sector organisations. But unless somebody analyses that, you can't identify what's going on. And that, in, in today's world, we all know how finances are in difficulty across the public sector. And, and we need to focus on what we're doing to make it cost effective. And the analyst can do that. And as Stacey said, he can identify geographical areas where there's areas of concern. So actually, resources can be deployed, more resources can be deployed into an area of concern. He can also identify risk as well, which is very important to us. So it's a crucial post, in my view, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any more questions? I believe councillor Grantham has a question for us.
Yeah, thank you. On page 21 of the Agenda Pack mentions financial contributions for the LSCP's work. Of the three lead safeguarding partners, the police are the only one not to have agreed to a 5% increase in contributions for last year and this year. Do you have any concerns about the future capacity that the police to fund and resource the multi-agency safeguarding arrangements?
Thank you for your question. I mean, this is very live, isn't it? I think we're all aware of the current situation of the Lincolnshire Police. It's been in the media for many months now. And I am particularly engaged in this, not only in this role, but I chair the Police and Crime Panel, which supports and scrutinises the role of the Police and Crime Commissioner. So I've been heavily involved in some of the discussions and debates around this. And I've had meetings with the Chief Constable and the Police and Crime Commissioner. And, and the panel has discussed this as well. And we are awaiting some information. I have written personally to the Policing Minister around police funding, expressing my concerns for the public of Lincolnshire, really, because we need an efficient and an effective police service. And without funding, that's going to be difficult. So I am concerned as the independent scrutineer of the partnership. I'm also concerned as the chairman of the Police and Crime Panel regarding the funding for Lincolnshire Police. I believe that the Chief Constable and the Police and Crime Commissioner are having a meeting with the Policing Minister this month. The Police and Crime Panel are meeting this month. And hopefully, we will get to know what is happening. It's so important because the Chief Constable is reaching a stage in October where he is going to have to make a decision whether to cut his resources or not. From a partnership perspective, we are concerned, of course. We don't know what the situation is, but we will be, through, through our links, I've got personal links with them through the work that I do. And we will be monitoring this very closely. And the partnership executive will clearly be discussing this, depending on the outcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just ask, do you have a Plan B for this, in a backup plan here?
Well, Plan B is, is not easy, is it? Because it's an unknown in a way. But clearly, the partnership will have to look at itself, look at its finances. And it may have to review its, its costs as well, depending on the income that it receives. So there's, there's, there may be some difficult choices for the partnership. But in my view, we must not actually reduce the service that we give to our children in Lincolnshire.
Thank you very much. Thank you. councillor Cleaver, please.
Thank you, chairman. Thank you for the report. As, as ever, very comprehensive and very reassuring. Just like to give you the opportunity to amplify a few points, if I may. Could you just give us a clearer outline of the changing, the volume of work, which the partnership has to, I mean, are cases going up or cases reducing? Within that, are we seeing trends of the type of cases? So, I mean, a lot of the things that, the priorities that you've identified are things that have been known about as problems for a long time. Online exploitation, the need to protect children from unhealthy relationships and all of that. And in particular, in relation to online exploitation, are we now on top of that? Have we now taught children how to protect themselves online? Is that now a declining problem or is it still an ongoing problem? Or is it just getting even more complicated than it was before? So I'm interested to know what's coming down the line as well. If, if we know what we're expecting, what we've seen maybe happening in other areas that may be coming here, that isn't a problem here. Do we, do we have any sense of, of those things, please?
Thank you for your question, councillor. It may be that Heather could answer the first part of your question because the, the partnership is not an operational body. It's a coordinating body. So the operational bodies, the key, the key bodies are Children's Services, the police and the health community. So I don't know whether Heather, you want to?
Yeah. And so I think in terms of the, the volume of cases, and as Chris says, the cases sit with the different organisations. So I'll reflect on, on Children's Services rather than the other organisations. I think we, we have seen an increase in workload. We've seen an increase in referrals. And we've responded to that. So we've made sure our staffing structure is appropriate to respond to that. In terms of trends on types of cases, I think that we see the complexity of cases increase without a shadow of a doubt. And we see the work that we need to do with families and with children increase as, 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 as we move through. Because we know that the safeguarding world is consistently evolving and that will connect to the online harm as well, which I know Chris will come to. But in terms of, I think in terms of the partnership work, and that does place an increased pressure. It's more staff to train. It's more cases to audit. It's more activity to look at. It's potentially more reviews because we want to look for learning. And so that, I think there is a, a, a pressure that spirals beyond the, the cases that we're looking at. And I know that when I was in executive this week, we were asked about the increased cost within Children's Services alone. And, you know, I was really clear in there. I feel we're doing an awful lot to mitigate that. But it is an area of challenge and will remain a pressure as we move into budget setting. Chris, do you want to cover online harm? Yeah.
Thank you, Heather. I, I think, I think your, your point about online harm is absolutely right. It's, it's not new, but it's developing. I mean, look at artificial intelligence and how that's developing. I mean, the, the world of online has great opportunities for learning for children, but there's always a dark side to it as well. And, and what we're doing as a partnership, we're establishing a new subgroup, an online harm subgroup, to actually look at the, the work in more detail around that. Because it's not going to go away. I, I think it's just going to develop. I mean, you've got three-year-olds working on iPads and, and probably far more skilled than I am. But they, as children grow, they're developing their IT skills. And those skills will enable them to learn, but we must protect them as well. And so it's so important that we get ahead of the game. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Thank you. councillor Whitaker, please.
Thank you, chair. Thank you for a fantastic report. I'm normally sat on a flood committee, so children, it's quite strange to me, actually, although I have five grandchildren. On page 21 of your report, it states that the LSCP has been awarded funding from the family's first children Pathfinder for 2024, 25 and 25, 26. And goes on to say on page 23 that as the Pathfinder concludes in March 26, the LS, LSCP will look at how to, the changes and benefits can be sustained into 2026 and beyond. What have the benefits specifically been to the LSCP?
Thanks for your question. And I think the Pathfinder has kept us all very busy the last sort of couple of years. But actually, the benefits are huge. I sit on a national network of other business managers because there's one of me in each local authority. And the benefit of the Pathfinder is that we've had the resources, we've had the time, we've had sort of a core project team really supporting the work that we're doing. Because we would have had to do this anyway, but actually, we've had that opportunity. I think the biggest benefit, I think, for us as a partnership, I think for children in Lincolnshire, has been that strengthening of our connections with education. I think we thought we were quite good before, but actually, this has really given us that opportunity to maximise that. We've set up a whole structure to really kind of bring our designated safeguarding leads in schools, but also our early years providers as well and our post-16s to kind of come together on a locality basis and meet with local police officers, to meet with local Children's Services staff and kind of share and understand what's going on for them and for their children in their, in their schools, in their locality. And then that kind of feeds up into the rest of the governance of our partnership at all levels. So actually, the voice from those sort of, what do I say grassroots? Because that feels like it's minimising it. But from the frontline then has that voice all the way up to the meetings that Heather chairs and that Heather sits at. So we really do hear the voice. And then that information is cascaded down as well. Sorry, do you want to come back on that?
So many of the benefits are communication rather than, rather than monetary benefits?
Yeah, yeah. So it's kind of what we've done because it is, it's, because it is that sustainability. So I think if we were just to rely on that money and use it specifically, it's then what do we do next year and the year after? So what we've tried to do is build a model that, once the Pathfinder sort of concludes in March, that then the LSCP is able to pick that up with other colleagues across sort of the partnership and think, okay, this, this has really made a difference. This is really important to us and how we work. How do we keep it going? And I think that is kind of how we've built that model with regards to the education involvement as well. So that, we're looking at that will sustain. We've remodelled our structure as well. So our governance structure will be moving. So we've, we've just started the transition over to support some of the other changes that the Pathfinder brought in around multi-agency child protection teams. So we've absorbed the governance of that. So set up a new structure to ensure that our senior partners have that direct line of sight and oversight around some of those child protection issues as well from the partnership perspective. So we've remodelled that. So we know that that will be sustainable and we can continue to, to develop and work on that moving forward. I think alternatively as well, I think Chris has refocused around independent scrutiny and kind of we've enhanced that within the partnership. So we're really testing and challenging ourselves. So we've given more of a spotlight around how we do those checks and balances to make sure that partners are doing what they need to be doing and that those, that impact on children is being delivered as we would expect it. And then I think it says in the report about that investment in training. So some of the new training that we've been able to develop and, and deliver as well. And that has been some of the funding that's supported that. But again, because we've got our own training team, we know that that will be sustainable going forward as well. So I think Pathfinder has given us that space and, and that investment initially. But we've always been really mindful that actually, when Pathfinder concludes, we need to continue that. And that's why the partnership's been quite integral to the Pathfinder work and we've worked really closely. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for the question and for the answer. Thank you very much. I believe Heather wants to come in now, then please.
Actually, Stacey went on to, to explain, I think, the elements I was going to explain. But just, just for members, so when we were a Pathfinder, we were asked to implement reforms and to try out reforms that have now been introduced for every local authority in the country. And we were given additional funding to test that out and to implement it. And so we were able to really do some of the hard thinking, do some of the testing with enough capacity to do that in a really safe way and to consider it. And Stacey's right, from the very beginning, we have, we have had a mind to. And when this additional resource is gone, it's about leaving the partnership in a place where we can continue that good work. So not putting in lots of additional roles that then have to be removed, but actually changing our structures, changing our approach, having a, a, a different way of working. There is some funding that's then come through that is about how we have the reforms on an ongoing basis. And that will support us with some of the, some of the additionality that we will need. But some of that additionality sits within Children's Services as well because a lot of the reforms were focused on Children's Services and the partnership rather than the, the other partners specifically.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you. I think councillor Grantham would like to ask a question, please.
Thank you, chair. On page 18, the annual report sets out the five strategic priorities for 2022 to 2025. And it also goes on to say that it's also being reviewed for this year. Are there any changes to the strategic priorities for 2025 to 2028?
There are. There are. So there's, so there's a, there's a couple. So the ones that we're going to keep are exploitation, neglect, child sexual abuse and physical harm. The emotional wellbeing one, we've kind of extended that to include more trauma-aware practices as well. So maybe thinking about more that high end of that emotional needs spectrum rather than sort of the lower end. But we did introduce two new ones. I think, as you've just heard, in relation to the Pathfinder work and the changes in the statutory guidance, there's been a huge amount of activity with a more of an inward focus around the partnership to make sure that we're compliant with the statutory expectations and duties. So we felt that actually, it'd be good to have a priority focused on that and making sure that we're doing what we need to be doing and we're saying, what we're saying we're going to do as well. So we've got around responding, implementing and evaluating the effectiveness of the new working together arrangements across the partnership. So we'll be kind of assessing ourselves. And then further to councillor Cleaver's query, we've taken one around online harms as well, in the broader sense. So that will include sort of financial harms, bullying, the sexting, the grooming. So it's, it's that virtual life that our children lead and making sure that they're safe doing that. So a lot of that work will be focused around engaging with parents and carers and, and other professionals to ensure that they're equipped to, to educate and protect the, the children that they come into contact with. So we've started to work on them. The business plan is being updated. And we'll do an update on those priorities when we come next year.
Thank you very much, Stacey. Thank you. I believe councillor Whitaker has a question. Thank you.
Thank you, chair. I assume that the age limit for the care that you give these children stopped. So what happens to these children when they get to age 18? And do you pass all the information on to which? all the information on to whichever service is going to look after them after the age of 18?
I think that might be one for Heather. I mean, I could talk about transitional safeguarding, what we've done, but in relation to the care, that would be children's services team.
Thank you. So in terms of the partnerships, there's a Lincolnshire Safeguarding Adults Board as well. So when we think about the partnership, we're thinking about themes and trends rather than individual cases. So those partnerships work together, they look at how we do that work across and how we ensure that we're picking up within the partnership. In terms of individual children, it will very much depend on the situation and the context. Obviously, if a child is a child in care, at 18 they become a care leaver, so we continue to deliver a service up until the age of 25. If they're a child with special educational needs, they continue to have a service from children's services up to the age of 25 as well. Where they are open to us for safeguarding reasons, we'll be thinking really early on about what that transition looks like, because actually once they're 18 and they become an adult, they are legally entitled to make decisions for themselves that we may or may not support. But that's adulthood, isn't it? You can choose where you live and who you see and how you go about that. So again, it's really complex. So if it's a child who's working with us in the youth justice space and we're worried about criminality, we'll already have a transition plan and we'll already be working with our colleagues in adult services. And really what's important is we prepare those young people themselves at 18 for that transition into having more responsibility and more right to make free choices themselves. And we help them as much as we can prior to that to be enabled to make those choices in a safe way. I think we have some young people who will need to transition to adult services for their own support and care and safety. They're not going to be able to make those decisions independently. And so we work closely with our adult services around that transition. So it's not a hard 18, because there's various different legislations which mean we're involved at different points, but there is clear transitions. And I think it's fair to say transitions is always a point that we need to keep an eye on and make sure that children and families understand what will happen when their child hits 18, because we often hear people talk about the cliff edge. And unfortunately, the way all of the legislation works is very often, a young person's schooling can end pretty soon after they're 18. So you can have a family who's had quite a lot of support and their child's gone to school every day, who suddenly has an adult who maybe isn't in educational provision, and making sure we understand how we transition them, but also prepare them for the fact that the legislation is very different. So I may be corrected on this if I'm wrong, well, I will be by Tara. But in the children's services world, if you've got an allocated social worker, you'll be visited at least once every six weeks, probably more if we've got more concerns. In the adult social services world, you'll probably not get those visits as frequently once that transition's been planned. And that's because it's a different legislative framework. The risks are often different for adults, and the choices that adults have are different to those of children. So it is a complex transitional safeguarding, and transitions generally are really a complex area. But just to assure you, we think really carefully about them. We have transition plans, we have pathways to adulthood, we have pathways out of special educational needs support, and it's an area we continue to look at. But it is a key one for the council to keep thinking about.
Thank you, Sandy. Thank you very much. Sorry, Heather. Sorry. Are there any other questions before councillor Parkinson? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Just one for me, and I would like to say to Chris as well, I think we echo the sentiment that protecting the partnership and protecting funding for children's services really ought to be probably the top priority for this council. I think regardless of what happens with external partners, external funding, we have a responsibility as a council to protect our young people. I really hope the executive feel the same way as me on that, and I'm happy to hold them to account on that. It's such an important job that we have here to make sure we're protecting these young people. My question is just a very brief one. On page, I believe, 41, it talks about early years and have an issue around, I believe, staff attendance. It does mention there's been some developments in terms of trying to deal with that. Has that been effective in terms of improving that attendance, or is there still more work to be done on that? It's at the bottom of page 41.
Apologies. Yeah, we work really closely with the early years team within children's services, and we know that they have got a really comprehensive offer. We're having conversations with them at the moment about whether we could have a shared platform so all of their training is in one place. So that will include our training and their bespoke training. I think as it says there, if you've got one childminder who's responsible for four children, how do they kind of release themselves without giving up a day's work? We attend the early years designated safeguarding meeting, so they're specifically for your childminders and for your nurseries, and they're often out of hours. So my staff will go and we have a regular input with them. So that's three times a year that we're making that connection. The early years staff within LCC, we get good attendance at the training, but it is a challenge. But we do continue to have conversations with sort of early years providers. The education meetings that we've set up as well, that is for early years as well. So we've started to see some attendance there. So whilst that's not training, it is another connection point that we have with the sector, because working together does identify that whilst we've got 364 schools in Lincolnshire, we've got over, if you combine then all your early years providers, it goes up to over 1,000. So it's a big group that we do need to tap into. But I'm confident that we are having those conversations sort of through our colleagues that support the sector and coming up with ways to try and support them.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions, please, before we move on? councillor Robinson, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. You mentioned that the, sorry, that you mentioned that the cases of neglect are increasing more than any other circumstance. Is this because more children are actually generally being neglected, or is it the fact that the term of neglect is changing, i.e. terms like child identity has been absorbed within this? Hypothetically, if I had a child at school, for example, and he was a young boy, and he came to me and he said he wanted to identify as, let's say, a female cat, I didn't listen. I said, sorry, mate, you're not a female cat, you're a young boy. If he then went to school and said, my parents are not accepting me for who I am through identity terms, would that be classed as neglect, or would that form under something else? Thank you.
Obviously, it might be, Tara might want to come in, but in relation to the formal definition of neglect and why it would be open to children's services, I wouldn't be sure on that one.
So if I answer that, I don't think that that would be a case that we're opening at that level. And I think it's a, without understanding more than that, and I think it's a theoretical case, is it councillor Robinson? So I think it would be about understanding that the life of that child and the experience of that child, which the school would do and the school would know more about. And again, it feels like that would be one piece of a jigsaw, because you would need to know an awful lot more about that experience. But I don't, you know, I don't see where on that basis we would have a case open and we would call that neglect.
Thank you, Heather. councillor Parkinson.
Thank you. Are we finding difficulties in mental health in children? Is that a trend that's going up? Because you hear about it more in terms of children's mental health issues. Is that something we are seeing?
Yeah.
Heather.
Yeah, I mean, I'll take that one. So Lincolnshire County Council is in an unusual position in that we are the lead commissioner for children and adolescents' mental health services. So actually, we commission the mental health services in Lincolnshire, and we also deliver an emotional wellbeing service, and we have mental health in schools. So I think we are working really hard to provide those services. We've definitely seen an increase since the pandemic in children's mental health and wellbeing needs, and we've been working really closely to ensure that our waiting lists are as good as they possibly can be. And our waiting lists are some of the best in the country for our CAMHS delivery, and the team who work on that do a really good job. I think if you have a child who's in emotional distress or suffering with mental health issues, any waiting time feels pretty intolerable. So I think that what we do is we hear an awful lot about waiting times with our services that we commission, but actually, our delivery is really, really strong. Our schools do a really good job and work really closely with the mental health in schools teams, but it's a national trend that we're seeing an uptick in children's mental health and wellbeing, reporting, those who self-report it, and also in the higher end in the complexity around eating disorders. We're seeing increased complexity in that area, but we work incredibly closely with LS, I'm going to get the acronym wrong now, LPFT, to support families with that. And you'll get reports through this committee separately on our wellbeing programmes. Thank you.
councillor Dayish, please.
Just a quick question. When a child is in protection and they reach the age of 18, and they've got qualifications while they're being 18, and they get a place in university and it's in a different county, does this county still look after them?
So in terms of language, I'll just be really clear. So if a child is in care rather than in protection, so a child in care is a child who we and the courts have agreed needs to come into the care of the council, and they'll be in a placement either with a residential home, a foster carer, or a family member if we've assessed that to be the appropriate placement for them, then they are a child in care unless we've gone through a different process. So if they're a child in care, they become a care leaver, and absolutely we would support our care leavers and who have reached the qualifications and want to go to university, we'll work with them to support them. We celebrate that with them, we try and offer them work experience wherever we can, just as you would your own children, because once we've brought that child into care, we are their corporate parents, so we would support them to do that. If they're a child in child protection, so they're not our child, but we're saying we're working with the family around a child protection plan, so the child's still living with their family, but we have a child protection plan in place, then as part of that transition into adulthood, we'll be working with that family on how they best support their young adult to progress.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So any other questions, please? Thank you very much for all your comments. So that concludes that segment. So I propose that the committee has reviewed the annual report for 24-25, and has been assured of the activity of the partnership to safeguard and promote the welfare of children in Lincolnshire, and that we receive a further annual report update in September 26. Can you please raise your hands if you agree? Thank you very much. Thank you. That's passed. Thank you. I think we will just have a quick 10-minute comfort break. Thank you. We'll be back here just before quarter pass, please. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Welcome back. Right, children's, this is item six on the agenda, children's 0 to 19 health service, children and young people's nursing service review. This item is on pages 43 to 154 of the agenda pack and is for pre-decision scrutiny prior to a decision by the executive councillor for children's services between 22 and 26 of September 25. Actions required. The actions required by the committee are to, one, consider the attached report and to determine whether the committee supports the recommendations to the executive councillor for children's services set out in the report, and two, to agree any additional comments to be passed on to the executive councillor in relation to this item. The report will be presented by Lynne Wilkinson, Lead Nurse, Children's Health 0 to 19, and Sarah Gregory, Strategic Commissioning Manager, Children's Commissioning. Over to Lynne and Sarah, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to start, if that's okay, and then I'll hand over to Lynne. So just to outline, the report outlines the proposed changes to the children and young people's nursing service model effective from the 1st of January 2026 to ensure alignment with the updated Healthy Child Programme 5 to 19. And further detail on the key findings from a review undertaken of the children and young people's nursing service is provided in the report itself, but also in the accompanying appendices. The key recommendations for councillor, the executive councillor's decision-making is to start the children and young people's nursing service support from reception year, that is age four, five, instead of year one, to ensure earlier intervention and smoother transition from help visiting, and also to ensure that the children who need that support from the CYPN service are able to access it from their reception year. Also to change the delivery of the tier one continence and enuresis pathway by the children and young people's nursing service to align it with tier one provision, and that will be providing self-help information and resources as well as referral and signposting to the tier two clinical continence support. So why is these changes needed? So as outlined in the report, the local authority has responsibilities in relation to public health functions. The children and young people's nurses service is currently not delivering its core Healthy Child Programme offer due to being overwhelmed with continence-related work. The Healthy Child Programme has been updated and the service model needs to be better aligned to reflect the updated Healthy Child Programme and the schedule of interventions that are relevant to the service. The children and young people's nurses service is fully funded from the Public Health Grant, which has specific conditions that must be adhered to. As outlined in the report, just over 96% of referrals to the children and young people's nurses service were for continence issues, meaning that approximately £628,000 of public health grant funding was utilised in 2425 for continence support, which is not part of the public health grant for the Healthy Child Programme 5 to 19. It's not a statutory requirement to provide tier one continence support, it's not a mandated part of the Healthy Child Programme, and it isn't funded by the Integrated Care Board. The current tier one continence and enuresis pathway was only supposed to be an interim arrangement, and it was only supposed to be offering low-level support and not a core function of the children and young people's nursing service. Benchmarking with other areas has shown that the support currently provided by the children and young people's nurses service is much more comprehensive than what is available in other areas, and where a similar offer is available, this is primarily funded through the Integrated Care Board as it sits within a tier two continence offer. The tier two continence service in Lincolnshire is funded by the Integrated Care Board, but it is currently underfunded and under-resourced. The children and young people's nurses service are currently holding, have been holding on to more complex cases which would normally sit under a tier two, instead of referring them on to the service due to the reduced capacity within the tier two continence service. The council has given notice to the Integrated Care Board that it is no longer sustainable to continue to deliver a tier two children's continence service on behalf of the Integrated Care Board. The recommendations in relation to changing the tier one pathway are in line with the tier one offer available in many other local authority areas. There is a need to ensure more support for our most vulnerable children and young people. Mapping against the updated Healthy Child Programme schedule of interventions has identified that there are gaps in provision for vulnerable groups that could be met by the children and young people's nursing service if they had the capacity to do so. As outlined in the report, more Lincolnshire children and young people are facing health inequalities, and without intervention, these will have a profound and lasting impact on them and will also increase the burden on public health services. The current model limits the support that can be provided by the children and young people's nurses service for vulnerable groups with long-term health needs or medical conditions that are impacting on their ability to engage in education. Stakeholder engagement has identified the need to better align the children and young people's nursing service to the Healthy Child Programme 5 to 19, with providing targeted advice and support to help parent carers managing their child's long-term health needs and/or medical conditions being a top priority for both adults and young people. There is also a need to better align the service to the Healthy Child Programme. The change of professional for children in their reception year at school would better align, also better align the help visiting service with the delivery of the Healthy Child Programme 0 to 5, and would ensure a stronger focus on supporting children in their early years to have the best start in life and be ready for school. This is a key priority nationally with a key focus on 75% of children achieving a good level of development by 2028. It would also better align the children and young people's nursing service with the delivery of the Healthy Child Programme for school-aged children and young people, and as highlighted at the beginning, it would ensure that those children, when they enter their reception year, that need support from that service, they will be able to access it. There is also no alternative viable options to deliver the recommended model, but continue with the same tier one continence pathway would require additional funding, which is not viable, given the existing pressures on our current statutory services. The proposed change to the model will not require any additional funding. The benefits of the proposed model are outlined in the report, and I'll hand over to Lynne in a moment, who will highlight some of these. There are also many positive impacts identified for the recommended model, and the perceived negative impacts are also identified, which are mainly associated with the change to the tier one pathway, to make it clear that, and to make it clearer, that children and young people's nursing service will deliver what is only tier one work. Mitigations have been identified for the perceived negative impacts. There are some risks also that have been considered for the recommended changes, and it is recognised that the changes to the tier one pathway do rely on the Integrated Care Board recommissioning a robust tier two children's continence service offer. However, the council is not in a position to determine what the Integrated Care Board will commission. I'll hand over to Lynne. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. So I wanted to go on and talk about some of the benefits of the proposed model. The recommended model, as outlined in the report and in appendix one, and the key changes that have been identified within that, there's many benefits within the recommended model, and it will allow us, just providing the tier one continence provision, will allow the service in terms of health outcomes, so we'll be able to refocus the children and young people's nurse services to those children that have got long-term health needs and medical conditions that may be impacting on their ability to attend education, so we're able to support them with plans to get them back into the educational setting sooner. Education engagement, so supporting vulnerable children that have got additional needs to stay or return into mainstream schools. Health inequality reduction, so targeting to support children and young people in those most deprived areas, or those that have got the more complex needs. School support, so we will able to target schools specifically around training for asthma, diabetes and anaphylaxis. Clarity, so we'll be able to provide a clearer service definition for what children and young people's services offer for both families but professionals as well. Early years, so we'll be able to strengthen the health visiting model and focus on school readiness and toileting, and also digital access. We've got a lot more digital technology now that's available to us so that we can deliver services in a different way, so there'll be a lot more online help tools, there's a lot of national support tools for bladder and bowel, and we'll be able to have online workshops as well to support families and other professionals. So in terms of a finance overview, we're not looking for any additional budget to deliver the children and young people's nurse service, given the options that have been laid out in the report. As Sarah has alluded to, we are currently funded through the Children's Public Health Grant with an allocation of £652,755. We're able to actually present a reduction in budget, we've had a review of the current roles within the service, and the children and young people's nurses practice supervisor post would not be required as part of the model that's been proposed, and that would actually reduce the spend by over £63,000 per year. The reason for the decrease is we've got other practice supervisors within the 0 to 19 service, and they would then take over and support the children and young people's nurse service, so they wouldn't be left without that line management and leadership support. The savings are not related to the current vacancy factor that we've got within the service, and we are out to advert for those posts, we would need those. Sustainability, the revised model ensures that the children and young people's service remains financially stable and sustainable within the public health allocation. It allows the council to redirect resources towards supporting those most vulnerable children and young people with long-term health needs and medical conditions without compromising any of the quality of the service that we're able to deliver. In terms of legal and strategic alignment, the recommended model also supports a number of joint strategic needs topics, start well, live well, priorities which are national, school achievement, healthy weight, mental health, oral health. In conclusion, the proposed model realigns the children and young people's nurse service with the National Healthy Child Programme, which is 5 to 19 guidance. It frees up capacity to be able to support vulnerable children and young people more effectively, maintains financial stability within, without any additional investment, and I've already mentioned that we'd be able to make a saving as well, and ensures a clear, equitable and targeted public health offer for the children and young people across Lincolnshire, and this has also been supported by legal services and finance. Thank you.
Thank you both very much for those reports. Very interesting. Thank you. Do we have any questions, please, councillor?
Yeah, I'm just going to go first for me. First question is on page 49, the report mentions that in 2024 to 2025, 96.3% of acceptable referrals were the continuance issue. How many children and young people, this is a quote too, and how will the children and young people currently receiving current support be transitioned to the new model, if there is a new model at all? Will there be a stepping down process, or will the support just cease?
Whilst Sarah was just looking for the data, I'll come in on the second part of that. that. We are planning on delivering what is true Tier One support, so that will not stop from the Children and Young People's Nurse Service. The work that we're talking about transitioning is actually Tier Two work, so it would go into the Tier Two service. That is commissioned by the Integrated Care Board, and we would be working very closely with them in terms of any new provider, so it would be a smooth and seamless transition. Children and young people should not see a gap in, in any service delivery, and we would make sure, along with the ICB, that that happened.
It was 720 children. Thank you both. Councillor Rowe, please.
Thank you very much. A couple of things. First, nothing to do with this subject. I've been messaged by councillor Corey, who sent her apologies on Monday, she doesn't understand why the message didn't get through to yourself and the committee, and we'll look into it. With regard to this item, it's pretty sad that it's got to come to us. I know our officers will be upset that we aren't able to continue giving the type of service that, that we have been doing, but we have a situation where our statutory services are being detrimentally affected by a non-statutory, or a non-statutory service for ourselves. This obviously is a statutory service, but not down to us, so I think we have very little option but to back away from this, having given the organisation that is legally responsible for it the opportunity to pay us to do it, being blunt. They obviously don't think they're in a position to do it, so I will happily, well not happily, I will support the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Councillor Parkinson, please.
Thank you. It mentions about potentially having inflationary uplifts. Is that something that you've had confirmation you will or won't be able to get?
So since we've had the, is this in relation to the Tier Two service? So the Tier Two service, it's the ICB, the Integrated Care Board, that currently commissions the council to deliver that on, on behalf. Although, so since the service has been commissioned, there has not been any inflationary uplifts applied, and the, and the ICB have not been able to agree to any inflationary uplifts applied, so hence why, as the service has continued, we've had to reduce staffing capacity in order to remain within budget.
Thank you. Councillor Whitaker, please.
Thank you, Chair. Superb report again, but as a layman, there's a lot I do not understand. So my question is, in less than 300 words, if possible, would you please explain the difference between Tier One and Tier Two continence? And do children need to be nappy-free on starting infant school at five years of age unless they have been put into a specific group?
Thank you for your question. I'll answer this one. The difference between Tier One and Tier Two is the services provided. So Tier One services are often that information, guidance and supporting parents to seek that information online. There are two online resources through Eric and Bladder and Bowel UK that have a lot of, a wealth of resources for families, and it's about supporting parents to support their child. It's also online workshops, and that will continue, so the Children and Young People's Nurse Service will deliver that Tier One. Tier Two is more when you're getting into your assessment, where that child needs additional provision, so it could be that the child needs an initial continence assessment, and it may be that they then go down the eligibility criteria for continence products, or it could be that they've got constipation or a urinary problem, and that all falls under Tier Two. The current Tier Two is a nursing model, so it's a community model trying to treat children within the community across Lincolnshire. With regards to nappies and children in reception, the aim obviously within the Health Visiting Service is to support children to become school-ready, and part of that is toilet training. We've already got a, a school readiness offer through the early years as well as through the Health Visiting Service, and we support families to do that. We've also got online resources ourselves that we've developed with the experts in Tier Two to support families online as well with toileting. There are some children that may be in, in products a lot longer, but that's dependent upon that medical reason. So if the child has got no bladder or bowel abnormality or a medical reason for them being in a continent, they are deemed toiletable, and we would support them on that toileting journey. Some children just take a little bit more support than, than others do, so you may not find all children are dry and continent by the time they reach school, but the majority should be.
Thank you, thank you Lynne, very much. Any more questions? Councillor Granton, please.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chair. On page 45, under Alternative Considerations, Alternatives Considered, it mentions two other options, which are nothing, or to continue to offer the same Tier One continuance pathway. Was there any consideration of changing the criteria for the Tier One continuance pathway? Is that, that only those with the highest need or who are more vulnerable could continue to access this support to help reduce the pressure on the service, but still provide support to those most in need?
Thank you for your question. I think the interim offer that we've been doing since the Tier Two service was set up, that's what, that's what's been happening. So Tier One is that advice, guidance and online support, and the Children and Young People's Nurse Service have been providing that additional support for those children with more complex needs, because the Tier Two service weren't able to deal with the volume and the wait times were increasing, so they have been providing support to that, and that's what we can't continue. It's not a sustainable model to be able to continue to deliver that moving forward, because it's the Tier One that sits under the local authority responsibility, all of the more complex and the hands-on nursing care that's provided for that sits under Tier Two, which is part of the Integrated Care Board. Does that answer your question? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Heather, please.
Lynne, can I just ask you to clarify, Tier One doesn't just sit under the local authority, does it? It sits across, you know, just, just in terms of clarity, Tier One, and if I'm wrong, correct me, but Tier One is the responsibility of a range of professionals, including GPs, including health visitors, include, so it's about making sure we get all of that, that offer right. It's not that everybody who needs advice and guidance needs to come to the local authority for it, your first point of contact should be able to do that.
Can I just add to that, because that's a really good point, Heather, because I think it's important to highlight that obviously when the agreement was to, for us to deliver an interim Tier One pathway, it was on the, on, on the agreement that it was a shared collective responsibility to provide that Tier One support, so GPs, other relevant medical health professionals, not just the Children and Young People's Nursing Service. But what we found as times gone by, the majority of referrals just come directly through the, to the service, so that shared responsibility has not been continued.
Thank you, that's interesting. I just want to ask a question myself. Are we seeing more of these cases? I mean, children's population is going down, but we seem to have a problem here with more censured children, for instance. Are we seeing more of this?
So, so I think, I think there's a range of complexities here, so I think we have babies surviving and thriving who wouldn't have survived and thrived previously because of advances in medical developments. Some of those children have quite complex bladder and bowel problems, which is part of probably a range of complexities that they've got. So I think that, that is, yes, at that higher end, I think we are seeing an increase, and that's one of the things we've worked with the ICB around demand, even within that complex end. And I think we are, we are also, that's why we want to do that work around advice and guidance and school readiness and work with schools and health visitors and GPs to ensure that all parents feel equipped to be able to toilet their child at the, at the appropriate time and to get support, advice and guidance when they need it. But I think there's, there's a range of things happening.
Okay, thank you, yes, certainly needs to be more support out there, I'm guessing that, yes. Thank you. Were there any more questions? Oh, hands going up all over.
Thank you. Again, thank you for the report, it's incredibly comprehensive, and it was a joy to read. In case I didn't pick it up properly from the report, because there's a lot in there, is the, the service you're referring to in terms of continence, is that the only ICB-funded element of this service, or are there other elements that do receive ICB funding? If so, could you tell me what they are, please? I'd be interested to know. Thank you.
So do you mean in terms of the Children and Young People's Nurse, in terms of the Children's Health Service? Yeah, so in terms of Children's Health Service, the Tier Two continence service is the only ICB-funded service. The rest of the whole Children's Health Service delivery is through the Public Health Grant.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Clark, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the report. In a nutshell, what will be the result of, you know, if the recommendation goes through? Will there be an impact in a certain area and will children be worse off?
Yes, please, Heather.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, councillor Clark. So we can assure the committee that we will work with the ICB whilst they confirm and move across to a new provider of these services. We have, ICB work in partnership with us across a range of things. We will not force this before they are ready, and we need to do it in a timely way, because it is, it is restricting the council's statutory duties, so we need to make sure that that continues to happen. But I can assure council that we will, we will be making sure that transition is a smooth one. In terms of what will happen, the difficulty is, in this case, we are a provider of this service, not the commissioner. So normally, I could tell scrutiny committee exactly what we would be, what we would be commissioning and how it was different from what we're commissioning now. What we're saying is, this is not our duty, and we can no longer provide it, therefore it will be for the ICB to specify what they're commissioning and, and develop that. So we will work with them to ensure a smooth transition, but the, the provision will be up to the ICB and will be governed through the ICB routes.
Thank you, Heather. Can you just explain to me at least about what's the difference between a provider and a commission, please?
So in the case of children, the rest of the Children's Health Service, we as a council get a public health grant and we deliver it. So we have the money, we have the statutory duty to deliver it, and we employ the people to deliver it. In the case of the continence currently for Tier Two, the ICB gets the money, the ICB gets the duty, and they have commissioned us to deliver it, so they pay us to deliver it. So we are a provider to another organisation. And another example of that would be, for example, the Behaviour Outreach Service, we have the money and we commission family action to provide that service, so they are the provider and we have contract management meetings with them about that. So in this case, if we, if we wanted to change our Behaviour Outreach Support Service, we would bring a specification here to say, this is what we're changing, this is what it will look like, because the council, the members are the decision-maker on that. In this case, we are providing a service to the ICB in the community, and so if that service is to change, that will be an ICB decision, not a, a council decision.
Thank you, thank you very much, you're so knowledgeable, thank you. We have councillor Parkinson, please.
Thank you. On page 58, it talks about there'll be reports into the inequalities. Really just want to understand, how long do those sorts of reports take to actually happen? And then will those reports then be made available to this committee at that point? It's the Health Inequalities section, section eight, Appendix One.
If I, if I answer it, Sarah, while you're looking, and then you can add if, if you need to. So the, the answer is yes, so we do those kind of reviews on a regular basis, so we're constantly reviewing what it is that we've got, what it is that the, the health of the community is telling us, and they're really helpful reports, and we often share them with schools. So for example, they tell us which areas have significant levels of tooth decay around children, which areas have more automobile crime as opposed to violent crime, and what you would want to see as a council is we use that information and we adapt our services where the need has changed, and we're constantly evolving so that we're using the money that we have to target the, the issues that we're seeing. So what you'll see is a, a report that will come through saying, for example, we need to change our mental health services, and this is why, and here is the evidence based on that. So it goes back to that analysis of trends and making sure that we're not a service that sits still, but where we see that we've got a particular need, for example, on the East Coast, then we respond to that. A lot of that analysis is done within our public health and performance teams, so they won't necessarily all come here, because sometimes they're all age, but what will come here is when, following that, we're going to change a service so that we can meet the need and we'll have that evidence base there.
Thank you, thank you. Councillor Whitaker, please.
Thank you, Chair. Being the proud father of two children, four grandchildren and a couple of goddaughters as well, obviously, both the parents and the grandparents have been involved in the toilet training of these, these youngsters as they come along. I could tell you some funny stories, but I won't. Could this service be supported better if the parents were better educated or trained in the toileting of their offspring?
Heather, thank you.
I take that, so the vast majority of parents and grandparents, you're absolutely right, toilet their own children without a shadow of a doubt. There's another cohort who actually need support because of the medical needs of their child, and they're going to need to approach that differently. And then, or because of the developmental needs of their child. So, so all children, as Lynne said, progress at different rates, and children need different levels of support. I think you're right, what we want to do is make sure that our Tier One is really focused on giving that advice and guidance, working with health visitors, working, you know, really as young as with mid, in the midwifey arena, to make sure that GPs are able to give that advice, midwives are able to give that advice, health visitors are, so that people don't need to wait until it's become a problem, and so that people understand when their child is perhaps missing key developmental milestones in toileting, that we might want to, to work with them on. So I think it's right that we should have a really high-quality advice and guidance service across Lincolnshire to support parents to do that. Most parents and most grandparents have children who will respond to the techniques that it sounds like your family did, and certainly, you know, my own children, others will always need extra wraparound support because of the needs of their child.
Yep, thank you very much.
Yes, the prevention is better than the cure, isn't it? Saves a lot of money. Can I just ask also, I don't know who can answer this, what actually do you provide in regard to the incontinent people, persons, please? What equipment?
What level do you mean, at the Tier Two or Tier One?
Either or either, please.
So Tier One obviously is the advice, guidance and support, and there's a lot of resources already online to support families, support professionals with regards to being able to toilet train their child. There's lots of information about different bladder and bowel conditions as well to be able to support families to, to manage those conditions. With regards to equipment, as part of the Tier Two, there is a continence product provision, so there's an NHS provide, continence products for those children that are eligible, they would be the only products that would be involved in both of the tiers. Tier Two also do do some prescribing through the GP, so there are certain medications that can be provided, but in terms of equipment, it would mainly your continence products that would come into Tier Two.
Thank you very much, thank you. Do we have any other questions? Councillor Granton, did you? Okay, thank you very much, very interested again. Thank you, everybody, for participation in that. I'd now like to invite members of the committee to comment, so we've done that bit, move on. Thank you all for your questions. I propose that we support the recommendations to the executive councillor for children's services, and then our comments we pass on to the executive councillor. Can I please have a second, there? Thank you, President Rowe, councillor Rowe, sorry. The comments from the committee's discussion on this report have been recorded by Tracy Johnson, senior scrutiny officer for passing on to executive councillor. Right, we now have a vote on this item. All those in favour, please raise your hand. I think that's unanimous, thank you very much, that's carried, thank you. I think that's unanimous, thank you very much, that's carried, thank you. Item seven, Children and Cultural Scrutiny Committee Work Programme. This item is on pages 155 to 164 of the agenda pack and sets out the committee's planned work programme for 2025-26. Actions required. The actions required by the committee are to, one, review and agree the committee's work programme set out in this report and highlight for discussion any additional scrutiny activity which could be considered for inclusion in the work programme. This report will be presented by Tracey Johnson, senior scrutiny officer. Thank you, Tracey, over to you.
Thank you, Chairman. I have a couple of amendments to the work programme to report. The decision report on Ancaster Primary School Block Four demolition and rebuild has been removed from the October agenda and work programme and will now be settled by the overview scrutiny management board on the 26th of February 2026, prior to decision by the executive on the 3rd of March. In addition, the decision report on Children in Care Transformation Short Stay Assessment Home has been deferred from the October agenda to the 5th of December agenda and the agenda will now, I'm sorry, the decision will now be taken between the 8th and 12th of December. This now means on the October agenda, we have an update on cultural developments across Lincolnshire. Those have been deferred very moment. The Young Carer Scrutiny Review Action Plan, which will be the first monitoring update, an update on the building communities specialist provision strategy, which is relating to the send hubs that members have been considering at the June meeting, the Children's Services' annual statutory complaints report for 24-25, and an exempt decision report on education provision planning. Going back to the cultural development report that's been requested, that was requested by councillor Corey at the last meeting and by members, officers have requested if the committee can confirm as to what areas they'd like to have been covered in that report, so if there's anything specific that the committee would like to have covered. So if anybody would like to maybe put any suggestions forward for the officers so that they can ensure that the report is sort of tailored to what the committee members are wanting. But otherwise, that's it, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, thank you. Okay, councillor Grantham, do we have any questions on that? Councillor Parkinson, please.
Why has the Ancaster been removed and then gone to OSMB? What's the reason?
Can you just say that?
The Ancaster Primary School Block, why has that been removed from here and gone to OSMB?
Yeah, thank you, thank you councillor Parkinson. So basically, the reason why is because the way in which the executive duties are spread across the executive has altered slightly. So when we as officers put this on the forward programme, it was it was slightly different. So now we have a property portfolio holder who sits in one scrutiny, you've got the finance councillor Catton in another and then you have councillor Oliver. And so I think as we're working it through, OSMB tends to consider stuff that's crosscutting, so it's got the finance, it's got the property and it's got the children's. So what what we're going to do going forward is, we'll still bring the strategy here, so this is the intention, so that because you will have the knowledge around how it links to everything else, but the kind of property sign-off and the financial sign-off will probably go to OSMB. So it's about making sure that the scrutiny committee that considers it is is referenced to the broader range of executives that are part of the decision-making.
So that's similar to the one that OSMB did the day, the the primary school block?
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you both, thank you very much. Are there any other questions, please? Okay, thank you. This now concludes that discussion then, or this item, thank you. Oh, Tracey, sorry.
Sorry, is there anything in particular the committee would like to request for in the culture developments report, just to give Will and Nicola a steer?
Sorry, was there anything in particular you wanted to comment on there?
Which report was requested, sorry, by councillor Corey?
It's on cultural developments across Lincolnshire. I think it's to do with like the live concert events, other sort of events going on in other heritage sites, things like that, that have been happening. So that's what was requested at the last meeting. If Nicole would like to come in as well.
So when, towards the end of the last meeting, councillor Corey asked for officers to present a paper on the wider impacts of tourism and culture, which is as broad as you want it to be or as narrow as you want it to be, because obviously that's that's quite a big agenda. So we could take an extraordinary amount of time and take you through in massive detail for the next five hours, everything that we do in culture. And whilst Will and I can guarantee you would absolutely love that, it might not be actually what you wanted. So what we wanted was a little bit more clarity. Unfortunately councillor Corey's not here because obviously she was the one who originally requested it. There was a lot of nodding in the room and a lot of warmth in the room that you'd think that that would be a really nice thing. But what officers want to be able to do is give you something that that actually is where you were looking. So Will and I have got some ideas about what that might be, so we can talk to you about, you know, the events programme, the museum development, et cetera, but but that that's information giving as opposed to, you know, something that's about scrutiny and you're scrutinising actually the work of what the council, you know, does. So what we wanted to do was offer back the opportunity about are there specific areas of work that the council delivers that you would be particularly interested in?
Can I just ask, were we spoke, were we sent something? Because I not received anything, you were, we weren't, okay. I didn't think I'd missed that one, but thank you, thank you. councillor Cleaver, please.
Thank you, yes. And from my perspective, and I think the intention of councillor Corey, I can't speak on her behalf, is that Lincoln Museum is very high profile. We hear a lot about it, I see a lot about it on social media, and it tends to dominate the cultural landscape, if you like, of the county. And very few of us know what else is done by your service, in fairness, in other areas and in other places outside Lincoln. So I think there's a there's a there's a thirst and a hunger to find out more about that and to know what the policy framework is for what budget there is, how it's spent, how we decide how we spend it and how well we think it's spent and how how successful we think those events actually are. So yes, it is a broad brush, but I guess we we need to have that broad brush understanding to start with as a committee and that might give us some idea as to then what we want to to drill down into. I hope that's helpful.
Thank you councillor, it is. And I know from Lyn's previous conversations, councillor Corey's previous conversations, that economic impact has been of particular interest to her. So I can draw the the committee's attention back to obviously when you had your first engagement sessions with us and the first induction sessions. And certainly we can reissue all of that about what the the culture service does. But particularly if a focus is about value for money and the economic impact, then that certainly gives us a much more helpful steer, if I'm getting nods around the room that you you feel that that would be helpful.
Thank you very much, thank you councillor. Oh, sorry, councillor Parkinson was not.
Yes, I just think on that, so for example, if we were to receive a list of, say, all of the upcoming events or work that's being done, so we we understand what is actually happening there. And then I suppose maybe a general summary of of the financial side of that, so what the costings are for LCC. And I know it's difficult to always say what revenue it's generating or what's estimated, but like you said, understanding the value that is generating, even if it's a very generalised overview, you know, what value is it bringing or is there non-monetary value that it's generating for the local area and those sort of things as well, just so we can understand, yeah, that side of it.
Thank you, that's really helpful and perhaps a little bit more detail about how we go about putting those business cases together, how we make decisions about what kind of things that we put on, what economic thinking that sits behind that, et cetera. That's really helpful, thank you.
Councillor Cleaver, please, thank you.
I just wanted to come back on something else, so if somebody else wants to carry on on this particular item, I'll I'll come in later if you like.
You go ahead, thank you. Councillor Whitaker then, please.
Thank you, Chair. I was just wondering, Nicole, is this the right committee to bring this out on? Or should we brought out on the, when the whole house is sitting here? Thank you.
It it's an interesting point because obviously the 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 activity that the cultural services delivers also kind of obviously sits into that economic development conversation and the tourism conversation. So we'd have a very similar conversation about actually, does it sit in growth committee better? However, culture is part of this committee. Perhaps after we've had the presentation to yourselves and you've had the opportunity to scrutinise the activity and feedback to us, you'll probably be in a better position to say, the whole council might benefit from a wider conversation now, what forum that would sit in, I I think would need some kind of careful thought, but perhaps this committee, I think we concluded, makes the most sense indeed. But it's interesting that your thoughts went in exactly the same spaces as ours did.
Thank you. Yes, the reason I ask is because I don't normally sit on this committee, so I would have known nothing about this had I not been sitting in for somebody today. Thank you.
Thank you. I must say they they do wonderful work, they really do. Councillor Cleaver and then I come to councillor Parkinson.
Sorry, just coming back to the to the work programme in general. I have a recollection, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we were going to look at school admissions statistics in terms of looking at how many children got their first preference, second preference, third preference, basically to scrutinise the success of the admissions policy and the work that we do on that and to identify if there are any pinch points or geographical areas where we feel there might be too many people not getting their first and second preferences for school places generally. I thought we were we were going to do that at some point, sorry.
Thank you councillor Cleaver, I think Heather's going to answer that.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much councillor Cleaver. If we did that as part of the school admissions policies and schemes paper in January, is that okay? Yeah, lovely.
Thank you very much. councillor Parkinson, please.
Thank you. Just on the culture side as well, I know that there was an invitation to the Lincoln Museum that went out to all councillors. Is it worth, when you do have events on, just ensuring the invites go out to all the councillors so we can try and get as many people there as possible? It brings a level of, I suppose, publicity as well to those sorts of events when we have them.
Yeah, absolutely. I suppose, like most things, it's the extent to which you'd like to receive them, because we put a lot of events on. Well, obviously, the really important ones do go in news links as well, but I'd be very, very happy to to share them wider, very much so, yeah. And the whole principle of actually bringing upcoming events once or twice a year here as well, because our larger events are obviously planned further in advance, so Lincoln Castle Illuminated, the concert castle concerts, the joust, the summer activity, et cetera, it'd be great to bring those here in addition as well.
I think it'd be quite nice if that was just circulated, because then I think unfortunately as councillors, there's lots of things that come in that can get quite lost sometimes. If there's just quite a clear breakdown of what events are going on in the county, of course, there'll be events happening in certain divisions as well that will affect certain councillors they may not even be aware of. So I think it's worth just being able to have that circulated in quite an easy format, just so then we know exactly what's going on and where in the county and we can, you know, talk to our locals about it.
Yeah, fantastic, we can do that and then we can include a link on where to find out more.
Thank you, that'd be wonderful, thank you. Thank you all very much for your questions and answers and your support here. Any more questions before we move on? Did you want to ask anything, please, councillor Grantham?
There's still much a question, I just wanted to propose for the next agenda, if we can get clarity around our mills and if we can get a report on that for the next committee and precisely what the executives are doing about that, since there's been a bit of media attention around it.
Sorry councillor Grantham, windmills, I thought you said meals, I was thinking, I wasn't, I wasn't sure I was in charge of catering this week, but but but.
Oh, I forgot to tell you, sorry.
Yeah, and the windmills actually sits with property as a service. So whilst we're more than happy to take something offline, that would actually sit within that that particular scrutiny, because it's a property agenda and not a culture agenda.
Thank you. Tracey, please.
Yeah, thank you. On the four planned decisions, there is a decision coming up on the windmill strategy and that's going to the overview scrutiny management board first, I think in October, and then to executive in November. So that's where it would be sitting instead.
Thank you very much for that. Okay, any more questions from anybody, please? Okay, I think we have concluded that session then, that items, those items. So I propose that we approve the planned programme, work programme for 25-26 as amended, subject to consideration of any items highlighted in today's discussion. Can you please raise your hand if you agree? I think that's, yep, thank you very much. And that's it, thank you very much. This now concludes the business of this meeting. Thank you for everyone for attending and all your comments and questions. Thank you as well for everybody that's attended. Thank you.